Meeting's going to come to quarter on is November twentieth at six thirty P M. Everybody in the audience, please sign.
Wait.
Okay. So then everybody's, everybody's sign in at the door and please silence your cell phones.
I thought we were kind of static.
Please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic provision stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This thing we stand up goes nuts, it's like.
Hey, are we gonna be calling back up those?
Oh, we're three.
I think that's just how it do.
Tonight, we have four appeals to hear and decide whether it's grant or deny the request for a variance based on the established zoning laws of the town of Manlius. The board will hear each su- each appeal separately, we will hear from the applicant. There'll be a time to hear from the public on the variance and then we will make our decision by voice votes. First, have board members review the minutes from the meeting from.
August.
August. August. And then go back.
And you're gonna make a motion to approve.
Well, before we do that, is there any corrections or anything, people? No, okay, now good.
Yeah, make the motion to approve and then from August, I will second them.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anybody opposed?
I understand.
He wasn't.
The minutes are approved as written and amended, thank you. The legal notice for tonight's agenda has been published to notify the internal public of this meeting, may I get a motion to waive the reading of the publication?
Make that motion outside.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Vote passes, at this time, I request a motion to open the public hearing for the first item on the agenda. Which is Andrew Markport at seventy one oh one Park, Parker Road, East Syracuse.
There's a motion of. And seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Mr. Markport, please come up and come to uh, come to the podium and tell us what you'd like to do and why you need the variance.
I would like to build a barn. And it's too tall.
According to your guys' uh, regular rules, regulations, um, give the first storage and putting equipment and stuff inside, even from outside of the lot.
It's gonna be twenty-three feet of that, right?
Yeah. Off minus two inches, I guess, yeah. Yeah, twenty-three feet, I think is what we figured out, Greg.
Yeah.
So we need six foot over that one. Yep.
Yes, really sixty for the total of four twenty-three feet. Uh, is it gonna match the house?
As close as we can.
Okay.
For the color.
For the color?
Yes, it'll be. Originally was gonna do a garage, but then talking to the code enforcement, it's gonna be a pain to do a garage, it'd be easier to do a pool, so. As close as we can get the siding color with metal. You know what I mean, it's not same brand or whatever, so. It'll be as close as we can.
What's property do you have?
That one's seven acres, but I also own. Basically sixty acres behind it. That house sits on six point seven by, I think.
So when you say behind, it's me going west?
Uh, yes, west and then north. Oh, I own down Carter and then up Calhoun too.
Okay. So that corner.
Uh, do you remember Greenwood Winery?
Yeah.
Yes.
I own that.
Okay. Okay. Um, any power or sewer going to be going?
It goes through power.
Through power. No one's gonna be living in it?
No.
It's gonna be a.
Just whole storage, but more. I don't think so, no. It'd be too much of a pain to. Wetterize it for all intensive purposes when their house is right there and I can just have the hose right there, you know what I mean, so I don't see myself. Doing that at any point then.
What are you gonna put for base brush stone?
Yes.
So just power?
Yes.
No commercial endeavors inside of it?
Not. Eh, not for me, I work enough, I don't know work anymore.
Just out of curiosity, why do you need the extra paint?
I'm gonna put uh, anticoast on. So there's another rope there for uh, the bins, you know, all the Christmas decorations and all the other stuff, so that makes it taller. Cause you, to make it seven, basically seven foot inside with thirteen foot walls. It would be, that's the one real reason, it's just for the rule above for storage.
I will say during our discussion, one of the key factors is the height of the wall itself for moving, you talked about getting things in and out. So he had, just to start. It from. Grade to the, to the eve is thirteen feet because that's the only way you can get a tall enough garage door to move. Anything, uh, you know. Large enough in. So he already.
Remember to put a camper uh, RV or or a camper with boat or something like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Tall enough to do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Um, any other questions? Yeah. Thank you, go ahead and have a seat, um. I will now open the meeting to anybody in the audience or online. There's a mark online, Mark, you have anything to say?
Let's see if he has a raise.
All right, at this time, I request a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion.
Warren, second?
Yep.
Um, thank you, now we'll discuss the board, I'm all in favor?
Aye.
And I, anybody opposed?
Nope.
All right, discussion.
Driving there, I saw um. About three other pole barns that high. And then there, and then there is, it's the horns to the field neighborhood.
In the last year and a half, we've agreed probably three to four that are within two miles of that, that we've also done height variances on the whole thing.
Yep.
But we want a condition that it couldn't have living quarters in it?
Absolutely.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I just think, just think, I know it's just electric, but I think make sure there's no becoming a living quarters in there, especially if it needs to be converted, that we have that as a condition. Unfortunately that. Okay, any other discussions?
Color. Close to the house, as he said.
Yeah.
Condition.
Thanks. Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna go through the five criteria. Okay. Um, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance.
This, you should make it shorter.
Shorter.
Yeah.
Then you're limited on what you can put in that, so.
So, and or if you sell the house and food and dolls. You could put in fifty, maybe easier.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's not out of character.
So that's a yes for number one? Warren?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Yeah?
Hmm.
Okay. Whether undesirable change can be produced compared to neighborhood or to nearby properties?
I don't know, so.
No?
No.
No. I think what you said Claire is that there's other pole barns in the area of this neighborhood. Um, so it's not. Whether the request variance is substantial, six feet?
No.
No, so.
No? Okay, whether the variance has an impact, has an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No, I mean, you own, he owns all land around him, so. Okay, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. D B A, after taking consideration the above five factors, finds benefits the applicant does outweigh detriment to the neighborhood or community. Yes?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Okay. The Z B A further finds that a variance for six foot is a minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve type of character that I put in the health, safety and welfare of the. Community, this agreement, there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a type-two action on seeker and no further reviews required. Based on the discussions, would someone like a motion to grant or deny the area variance for this applicant?
Um, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant a height variance of six feet to Andrew Markport for the property located at seventy-one oh one Carter Road, East York, one three zero five seven tax map. Uh, zero three dot dash zero one dash zero one dot two. Uh, this variance being granted for the construction of a fifteen foot by thirty-two foot detachable barn. With the condition that the barn will not be made until. Um.
And the same. It closely matches.
Yes, closely, I have forty by fifty by twenty-three. Um, that's where I heard.
That's on zoning board referrals, yeah.
Oh, and here, so it's a forty by fifty, you're correct. Forty by fifty is twenty-three feet though. But I'm here, it does, it says fifty by thirty-two, so you're correct, I read that wrong, I'm apologize.
No, that was my fault.
To amend it, it is a, the construction of a forty by fifty foot. By twenty-three feet tall accessory structure, which is a detachable. With the previously said conditions and what's. Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Vote if you care. Approved, Tom will get ahold of you regarding for whatever stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it.
No, Tom.
Um. Let's, let's touch base tomorrow. Um, regarding the completion of the plans.
Sure.
Uh, I think we, if we touch base on those, we should be able to get you up and running very shortly.
Very good.
Okay, next on the agenda?
You can go, you don't have to.
It's fun.
Um. The just property, I'm needing three, three, three crane drive. Um, at this time, I request a motion of a public hearing of the second item on the agenda.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. Hanlon, come on up to the podium and tell us what you would like to do.
Thank you. Your permission to address, did you? All get a copy for the secondary supplemental?
I think we did, yes.
They got everything that you.
Don't need all seven of these?
No, they, they got, e- everything you s- everything you submitted, they've got. So they should be good and kind of over with what we had discussed.
So, yes, you got a plan A and plan B, but go ahead, Mr. Hannah.
Uh, where was I gonna start, what I'm requesting and why?
Yes.
Uh, so I'd like to put accessory structure to shed. Um, living space. Uh, one of two locations, preferably after reviewing everything in the secondary location, uh, that would warrant that you drove by the, the house at the same time it happened to getting home. And we kind of looked over both locations. Um. The, the original one would need a setback variance of thirty-three feet in rear lot line. Um, the secondary. Uh, location, which is now like my primary focus.
Okay, okay.
I think it would be easier, it would be more well hidden from my two neighbors. Uh, it's also a little bit leveler, there's a huge mother's tree, silver maple.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, maybe you can. See it from the village.
Yes, it's huge.
So it's just my concern for the tree is that it causes some potential danger, not only to the structure, but if I'm keeping anything in there, then it's, you know. Spilling back in front of, so. I'd be happy with either one, I knew shut.
Which one would you prefer? It's hard, right?
It is hard without, I mean. Looking out of my window, I like the first location better, but that's because there's a giant tree there. Uh, but the tree is also concerning, so I guess maybe the secondary location is, is my first choice.
Does it change the requirements for the variance?
So.
Not for the rear yard, but for, there were these additional uh, setback on the side.
Yeah, so if you look at the motion, the way the motion is written, when we had the agenda meeting with Jamie. And I, Joe, I believe you might have been on for this, or Jamie, you went. We wrote the motion because we weren't sure, we were waiting for the arborist or not. We wrote the motion with the same rear yard setback, but also a side yard setback, so that he will have the option of.
Um, okay.
Which one to put it at, once the arborist comes out and makes that determination on whether the tree is a liability, right? And if you're gonna take the tree down or not, because of the liability.
So the motion would be, I mean.
The motion would cover both spots.
Yeah. So it would be us to determine whether or not we're gonna, if we do both, and just to cover the bases, we do both. If you go with plan A or plan B.
If I remember from driving by that tree is on the left side, right?
I'm sorry?
When I drove by the trees, on the left side of the lot, so that.
When you drove.
Kind of in the middle.
Well, if you were facing my house.
Yeah.
The tree is behind the house and on the left side.
On the left side, yeah, okay, yeah. I, both locations would be okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I'm safe.
But the um.
That would be.
And both locations are well hidden from all my other neighbors. I think I also included the. Uh, consent letter from my neighbors.
Yeah, thank you for doing all that today.
Yeah, and so, I mean, the color would be complimentary or the same as the house, you just, it's just a shed?
I, initially I tried to, I was gonna go with like a go-away green, you know, the whole concept like business uses, you don't see the buildings.
Right.
There, right, plotting it into the foliage with the arm by here, my trees over there, is, I don't want one of those shed here. Um, just happens to be in my yard, each. Uh, but I'm having to match the color of the house if. That's what the board would like.
I don't think it's necessary, we'll talk about it.
The only other thing was, if you put it on location B, the direction of the shed, this direction of shed would be, um. Width would be from front of yours to back.
Correct.
Side to side.
Correct. Yeah. So, in the, if it was in location one, it would be parallel with the house in terms of the length of the shed and the length of the house. If it's on the right side, as you're looking at the survey?
Yes.
It's big. The rectangle would be short end towards the house. Along and running along the side of the yard, unless it doesn't.
Yes.
Take up more yard space than necessary.
Okay, okay.
But if again, if the board decided that they liked it the other way. We'll make that work through.
All time. All right. Anybody, um. You go ahead and have a seat.
I just have to say thank you for your very thorough.
Yes.
And I love the reference to go away here, you said.
Anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Anybody online?
Make a motion to close the double three. For second?
Ten seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Anybody opposed? Um, I don't, I don't think the color really needs to matter. The shed, he can go with what he wants, I.
Either one would be fine.
Yes.
You got plenty of trees back here that are green. So, either one.
Um. I mean, plan A or plan B, do we go with both variances to cover bases when he chooses to decide? Or do we just choose one and he has to go with plan B? Or plan A, what do you do then?
Sure, you can condition out of either one or the other, it's fine.
If we have.
You set, you set like a minimal standard, basically, with. Covers, covers both. And should you put it in the one spot, it, the second part of the variance doesn't cover it.
Right, exactly right, there's, I wouldn't need it, so, so.
Yeah.
You're gonna give a maximum relief, so. Either utilize it or not.
Right, you give a maximum relief to basically cover where we're going B. But if he puts it in A, it's still gonna cover it.
Correct, so we should go for B.
That's the way I would.
You guys okay with that? I mean, the shed, it's hidden, it's other sheds in that area.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
That way you're, what are you gonna talk to the arborist, then you can decide, hey, okay, I'm either gonna put it here or I'm gonna put it there.
Yeah.
We're going down on that.
You okay with that, Tom?
Absolutely.
That gets a little more so variety and.
It's makes you believe.
Okay, I'm gonna go through the five criteria questions of board, determine whether the variance request is in balance with or in detriment to the health, safety and the well-being. Of the community. Okay, whether, uh, number one. Whether benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance.
Yeah, you put it in the middle of his yard, but then he loses the. Ability to use it back here.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Yeah.
Again.
It's would be feasible, but it'd be.
Again, in this neighborhood, looking at some of the other properties, there are a lot of them where it's back door of the lot.
Yeah. Whether undesirable change can be produced in character they put or detrimental to nearby properties?
Oh, no.
No. Uh, like you said, there's other sheds in other areas, he's trying to accommodate, blend into the, to the uh, trees. Whether the request variance is substantial?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't.
Yeah.
Claire, what do you think?
I think the thirty-three foot.
There are variance of thirty, fifty feet is the spot.
And fifteen is sort of on the side here. So.
So, yeah.
Warren?
I'm. We're just looking at some where the other sheds were, I don't think it's any different than people's that I saw out there.
Sixteen people.
Do we have one, no?
It's not, but it's, it's substantial according to the zoning, so, yes.
Yes, yes.
Hmm.
We can go with four yeses and one no?
Uh, I see your point. Just, I'm just thinking of what I saw on there, so.
Right, so you're looking from.
Technically, yes.
So forty, twenty, you're, you're definitely relieved.
Yeah.
Substantial.
Yeah, okay. Uh, whether the variance has an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No. No. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the Z B A, after taking consideration the above five factors, finds that the benefit the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. Yes? Yeah? Yes. Okay, the Z B A further finds the variance for thirty, so I'm looking at that, I gotta look at the picture quickly. So I know exactly, thank you that. Uh. The variance of thirty-three feet, the side yard setback variance of fifteen feet. Is a minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve or protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety and welfare of the community. There is an agreement that there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a type-two action on seeker and no further review is required. Based on our discussions, would someone make a motion to grant or deny area variance for this applicant?
Um, Chairman, I'll make the motion to grant a rear yard setback variance of thirty-three feet. Side yard setback variance fifteen feet, Ryan Hanlon, will preferably located at eighty-three forty-three Crane Drive. Manlius New York, one three, one oh four, tax map, hashtag one one five dot dash zero one dash. One zero dot zero, the variance is seen granted for construction of an eighteen by twelve foot shed. I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Here, it's Mr. Hanlon. So, do you understand where it covers both and wherever you decide to put it? And then Tom will get ahold of you and you guys figure all that out. Thank, thank you very much. Okay. At this time, okay, so now we're on the property, uh, Mr. Doolittle. At forty-five eighty-six past eight drive in Manlius, at this time, I request a motion to open the public hearing. For the third item on the agenda, from.
I'll make that, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're Mr. Doolittle?
Yes.
How are you today? Oh.
We didn't wait on the other one either.
Okay, so can I make a motion to a public rating for this one and a prior agenda item? Second then, or do I have to do the separate them? I think you do.
That's fine.
So.
Not, doesn't worry.
Eric seconded.
All in favor?
Uh.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Now, do a first, so, yes, go ahead for the public hearing, Mr. Doolittle.
Um. So, we're trying to put a pool in our backyard. Um, we're on a corner lot of one seventy-three. That's gate drive. Location where we want to put the pool, I were requesting variance, so. Twenty-eight feet. It's uh. Top of mine, it's, it's a part of the yard where it's actually like the most level. To do the pool, because as you look at where the pool is to the right. It slows down, and so. It, it was really not a great um, place to put it without major um. Major landscaping, um, so. We're hoping to get it um, with side horses, the white ones. They can see it there. So requesting variance of eight.
Thanks. All right, any questions for Mr. Doolittle?
No, this one's fun, cause it's like. Corner, front yard setback. Because it's two front yards.
It is, but you're, yeah, you're reading it out, I was wondering why it's a front yard.
Yeah, so you're on a corner and depending on the way that, that property is aligned, uh, very often corners will have two.
And you have a fence there already?
Yeah, we just put a big fence in about four years ago, but.
And then there's others, the house next to you has a pool as well.
Yes.
And then your fence and your pool obviously will have the appropriate alarms and all that.
The um.
For the pool itself.
Yeah, whatever, we'll. Need.
I don't know, Tom will, Tom will have to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yes, it, yes, it will.
Yeah.
We're putting the pool in.
Uh, we've, we've, we're using Canon most likely.
Okay, they, they'll, yeah, they'll go through with you, there's, you know, whatever the requirements are exactly, and.
Okay.
Part of it is just to make sure, you know, you don't have a kid wandering around in the neighborhood.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, if you, if you have kids who need swim lessons, it's very.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anybody in the audience have anything else to say, and a mark online? All right, I get a motion to close the public hearing. Discussion.
All right, uh, aye.
Aye.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, I have to close the bubble.
I had a couple of those, aye. Um. Discussion. If there's a fence there.
It's like somewhere we are, it's logical to have it there.
It's a slide, right?
The, the, yeah, the grade of the property, it makes sense, we're just trying to put it.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see really another spot without having, again, to do a lot of backfiller. Uh, I think it makes the most sense at its location.
So, that one.
Wouldn't want to change the basketball court, the ice rink, yeah, about there.
Yeah. I'm hopefully doing ice rink this year, no, no.
No.
We would. Yeah, we, we've, there's really no other good spot, the middle is, it just would crush the entire usage of the yard and it would be.
Definitely, yes, yeah.
Are you related to Karen Dooley?
Uh, it's my mother, yeah.
Okay. She ran right begins.
Yes.
Okay, so let's go through the uh, questions. Um. Review the criteria questions, first one is whether benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance.
Ooh, on that, oh, no.
No, I agree. Whether undesirable change can be produced in character of the neighborhood or detriment to neighborhood properties?
Oh, no, the other pool is wrong. Why?
Whether the request variance is substantial?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it, it is um, thirty-three feet, fifteen feet. Yeah.
No.
Whether the variance is adverse. I looked in the wrong one. Twenty-eight twelve, yes, I see. But it's. Um, whether the variance and the adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Yes. The Z B A, after taking consideration the above five factors, finds that the benefits the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The Z B A further finds that a variance for. Twenty-eight feet to Michael for the property located um, at forty-five eighty-six past eight drive. Is uh, is a minimum of there at the thirty, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, twenty-eight feet is a minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve or protect the character in the neighborhood. The health, safety and welfare of the community. There is an agreement, there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a type-two action on seeker and no further review is required. Based on our discussions, would someone like to make a motion to grant or deny an area variance for this applicant? You have a second?
Second.
You can.
He did second, I heard said.
He said it. Warren did. And you second Eric?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, applicant, you have been granted your current, your.
Hold on.
What did I do?
Didn't read what, his motion.
Oh, you didn't read the motion, I'm so sorry.
That's what I was trying to do there.
There you go.
And.
Go ahead, Warren.
Um, Chairman, I'd make a motion, zoning board grant area variance to. Michael and JB Doolittle. Property located at forty-five eighty-six Catsgate Drive. Various granted from purpose of. Ready construction. Min ground pool. Granted, front door setback twelve feet. And various in twenty-eight feet provided relief. You acquired forty foot front yards. Tax map ID. One zero eight. Period dash zero two dash three nine. Point zero.
Then we add a condition that it has the appropriate. Safety. Safety required.
That law?
Yes, that's code.
So.
Yeah.
It's not to be a condition?
I don't think it needs to be a condition.
Part of the code.
Yeah, I'm gonna make sure it happens.
I ask it every pool, it's, it's.
I would think the only thing that. And I'm not gonna, I don't, I'll say this, the only thing that would be is if the pool has to have all four sides. With a fence on it, so it doesn't touch the home, but that's never, we've never done that, I, this is the first time I'm ever bringing it up, but I would think that'd be the only thing, is if you would.
I think color is the third part.
No, you can use your home as part of the barrier.
Right, but there's not.
Your home is pu- will be used as part of the barrier for this, so then it will have all the alarms and everything.
You've got a chain link fence, would be the front of your house, the chain link fence here on the left, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
On the backside.
Every day.
So you're just having to sell what's.
Gates.
It's chain link, if you're looking at the house, the left side is chain link all the way back.
Curves in.
And then it curves in, so it's entirely fenced in.
Right.
Probably sixty percent chain length. Right, forty percent.
With, with the white fine fence, I couldn't see over that, yeah.
Yeah, there's a gate on the back.
Are you good?
Just need a second.
I didn't, I didn't even think about the chain link, and I was looking at the picture going, okay, let's just make sure, so.
I get a second?
You did it.
Yes.
Yes, I, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Advocate, your grant has requested for the variance, you come. I will thank you.
Do you hear it?
Yes.
Oh dear, sure.
Uh, if I could.